Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now may I bow with my humble servant prayer?
Amen. Thank you very much, folks. Thank you all for coming today. Today is a very busy day because we have our Thanksgiving dinner and we're all very excited about that because we have a lot of good food prepared. And we will move right into the first item on the agenda, folks, is to review in the minutes from the meeting on October 26, 2017.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to accept these minutes.
All right.
Go ahead and make the motion to accept these minutes.
All right. Commissioner Green's on the second. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor? All right. Thank you very much. Now we get into the financial statements and the treasury reports.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
Why do we have two overdraft charges?
Bad is probably overdraft where people wrote us bad checks.
Yes, it is. She had an ACH set up and her car got stolen so she closed her bank account and it overdrafted it.
Okay.
It was paid back. She paid it.
And the AT&amp;T services?
Yes.
We're paying almost $700 a month?
Yeah.
Well, those were our phone bills at all the lift stations?
Yes.
For the alarms?
Yeah. And that was probably a month before that, too. Two of them.
Okay.
So it was a combination of like a month and a half and that one. It's not like that all the time.
You had that on the general, don't you? Yeah.
Well, was it this month that Kenny went out and got a new part for that tractor?
Yeah, and it should show up on November.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to accept these.
Okay. Fantastic.
I'll second it.
All right. And any discussion? All right. All those in favor? All right. Thank you very much. Now we get into the financial statements and the treasury reports.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
Why do we have two overdraft charges?
Bad is probably overdraft where people wrote us bad checks.
Yes, it is. She had an ACH set up and her car got stolen so she closed her bank account and it overdrafted it.
Okay.
It was paid back. She paid it.
And the AT&amp;T services?
Yes.
We're paying almost $700 a month?
Yeah.
Well, those were our phone bills at all the lift stations?
Yes.
For the alarms?
Yeah. And that was probably a month before that, too. Two of them.
Okay.
So it was a combination of like a month and a half and that one. It's not like that all the time.
You had that on the general, don't you? Yeah.
Well, was it this month that Kenny went out and got a new part for that tractor?
Yeah, and it should show up on November.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to accept these.
Okay. Fantastic.
I'll second it.
All right. And any discussion? All right. All those in favor? All right. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move right along to Commissioner's reports. And in the absence of Commissioner Johnson, I will defer to our Public Works Director, Jim Hoskins, to give us an update on how the wastewater's going.
Well, basically, on the next final, we, over people that passed weekend, we almost had seven five hundred gallon, uh, clean up, but probably two hundred and forty gallon of spits. We got lucky, three out of four lift stations when the power went out was called on the pump down, so we had nine. But one of them did. And the other thing is we got our annual inspection report here. There's two things on that report. It's on me. There's two TSS hits on me, which are compliance. One's February, one's April. They're on me, but they're on God because we have a Tuesday morning, or Tuesday day in heavy rain. The Wednesday samples was full. The TSS is what's toast, spin solids, it's just stuff that you can't see in the water with the neck of eye, but under microscope they can. We got hit twice last year for that. Other than that, same as we did, and that was good. And then the other normal things that's been on there for a while, that's, that's on God. So, other than that, hey, pumps and generators.
And you emailed me that, but I didn't get the attachment. The attachment of that report.
I have it printed.
Do you have it? Okay. Yeah, because I got the email that said, here's the report, but I didn't have the attachment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and I forgot to say something to you about it.
Okay. I'll present it to you or you give it to me.
Yeah, and we'll get it to Commissioner.
I'll just, I'll over to you. I thought I'll take that.
All right. That's okay. All right. Thank you, Jim. All right. We will move right along to Commissioner Scott with the cemetery.
I haven't heard anything bad. I've talked to Dave a couple of times, that he seems to think everything's under control, going well, but the dirt's piling up again. So do we need more down at one of, any of the stations?
We always use dirt down there. I did notice the piles getting more and larger, but this time of the year it's probably going to be larger before I get to it.
Okay. So we probably are going to plan on moving the excess dirt to the station.
I think there's a lot of graves that we'd be changing, too.
There are. And they sink during the wintertime.
Close to the weekend.
But we will be thinking come spring, Jim, you think?
Yeah. In all honesty, we'll probably not catch it at a dry time to get in there without causing a lot of undue damage.
Right.
Now, if it gets to be clogged up to where it's going to be an ice hole, which probably isn't close enough now, I can catch it hackily around it and just kind of level it out to where, the dirt's real there, but if it gives that high appearance, it's not, you want to.
Right. And that area could use a little level down in there.
Yeah. If you also choose to do something like that, just call it dog, just first time we get a dry night, we can knock that down. It don't have to be dry to dry to do that.
Right. And I love that idea. Spreading it out, kind of level it out back there.
Yeah.
Because it really needs it.
Anything on the movement of dumpster block?
No.
No more?
Right. All right. Anything else?
Yeah.
Anything else you got, Tammy, on that?
No, that's all.
All right. I will say that I've got a bid on the water, or the, we did the water line, on the road to go through there. The road would be, that would be coming off of McDowling and running to Equity Drive. That was one we talked about. It's going to be about 600 feet long, 15 feet wide, six inches deep, using dense grade gravel for $10,768 that we can have done in the next two to three weeks.
And then it's up next to the tree, to the line, yeah, the property line or the fence line.
And something that Tammy and I had talked earlier, there are trail grants and things like that out there that I would like to pursue. I know the city's got to pay upfront, whether we get a grant or not, the city doesn't have to pay upfront, but I would like to try for one of these trail grants to help us pay for that, because it is going to be a walking trail that people will utilize coming from town to go to the library. And that, hopefully, ideally, it would keep less children out on 42, because there's so many. And y'all, we've talked about the sidewalk situation to go in front of the cemetery is really a mute point. So putting a road in behind the cemetery, which we're going to need it anyway, is, I think, a step in the right direction. What do you all think?
Can we get it cheaper than that? Like, do we have to be gravel? Can we get something else, like pavement? It's going to last longer?
I'm not opposed to pavement, but that would probably triple the price.
Like slum when we mow and everything?
Right. This will be okay. The gravel, it's going to have a fabric down, which is one of the biggest things, so the grass doesn't grow up in it. And then sometime in the future, maybe, you know, you stay in this politics long enough, maybe it'll be you that paves it. But I wouldn't anticipate paving it, probably in the next 20 years.
Well, I'm just thinking about, with it being there and gravel, if people are traveling on it more?
Right.
And you're going to get little holes and ditches, and then we have to continue to fill it in and all that.
That's, that's good points, and that's something we'll have to keep watching.
The only thing I may have to do that is, it won't be maintenance free by November, but using the G O K fabric underneath of it, it's not like a, put it out to the farm. The G O K fabric, I'm not getting upset, but I have actually laid that down, wet ground like right now, and drove my little truck, so it's got a, now it'll spin like this and it will hold you up.
Hmm. It's pretty thick, pretty good stuff.
It, it is good stuff, and it will minimize your maintenance, but it won't be totally maintenance free. It hits right back there, but it's probably not one of these things.
Right. The gravel's not going to go into the grass where we got to worry about hitting it with the mower. That's the big thing.
That's for food.
Yeah. We will.
And it would come out of the cemetery money. That's going to cut it pretty.
That, that is going to cut it pretty low.
It'll cut you down, isn't it?
Pretty good. It is. Well, that, that's going to cut that account. You don't, you don't see the CDs on the treasury report. And the goal would be to get that grant, and at least, you know, try to retain 80% of it.
And I'm just going to ask, Joanne, you think that's something that you could?
Yeah, I was going to, I didn't know if it's just the time to talk, but who, where, what organization, where do these grants, where do you?
The ones that Tammy had seen, and she showed them to me, was through the USDA.
Okay.
So, my Community Development Block Grant, one of those CDBGs.
And there's a lot of information on that website.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I'll definitely take a look at that and see what I can find out.
That's awesome.
I'll let you know.
Awesome.
But he wants a decision today?
Yes, so that he can schedule us for two to three weeks.
I was surprised he took that quick one.
Right. That is very quick, because he's got a lot of stuff going on and.
And weather's going to dictate a lot of that. I think we've got two weeks actually coming up.
Right.
So you have an estimation of what it's going to cost or anything?
Yes. He's got $10,768, and he thinks he can have it done in two to three weeks, weather permitting, of course. But the big thing is, I really want people off of Highway 42. My big thing is, they're walking from town to go to the library, and if we can get them off of 42 for a piece, maybe from Pendleton Avenue to Equity Drive, that's, that's a pretty good stretch, that there would be less kids walking on the street. And especially with it getting darker earlier, and these kids are walking, of course, they won't skateboard on gravel, but that will keep them off 42. And that, that's my goal. That's the target. If we can get more foot traffic and less, you know, back on that back road.
I don't want them going back there and doing some of the things that some of them are doing now.
Right. That was another issue there, you know, along that fence and its price, is there's so many trees along that fence line. I would like to save some of the bigger ones and get rid of the book, the little, the little straggly stuff, so it's a cleaned out fence line, and there's some nice cedar trees in there that look good. But if we can get rid of that little straggly stuff, so that it's, there's more visibility, you know, on the walk back through there, kind of keep it wide open. And it may be long, you know, I'm, I'm confident to say that we'll be burying people in that new part of the cemetery within two years. And that's, that is based on the amount of graves that we have available in the other part of the cemetery, and then the way of the ground. Like, you talked about leveling that ground out. There's so much of that underneath, so many, it's full of springs. And personally, I don't, I don't want to sell graves to people that I know there's springs running in there. So that, that limits how many graves we have left in the old section of the cemetery. I don't want a situation where we're burying people's loved ones and they're getting flooded. I don't, I don't want to get into that.
Any need to say?
Well, what worries me is, I'd kind of like to get a feel of the grant and see if we might be able to get it before we put all that, put that money into it, and then find out we're not eligible, and then.
Right. Well, and the truth is, we need that road. That's the thing. That, that's the thing. That's not going to change.
One thing, there are, there are already dry up back to people already. If you haven't had the pleasure of mowing it the last few times.
You have missed out.
You have missed out. The safety grid, everybody, and it's driving through there.
Right. And thank you for that point, Jim, because mowing that cemetery, or that new part, is a pain in the butt because of the, the ruts that people just drive wherever, because there's no road. They just figure, well, I can just, it's a field, I can just drive right through it. And no matter what way you mow, if you're going this way, or this way, or this way, you're going to, you're going to bump, bump. Jim's mowed it. Jim's mowed it.
One thing, Todd, I want to throw in here, I mean, if you do all do do that, where your building is now, you was talking about that dumpster pad over here, you've been talking about for quite some time?
Yes.
Have your contractor dump his materials there. He's got to dump them somewhere, and repick them back up?
Yeah.
And that will make a pretty good pad for your concrete?
Yes.
For that dumpster to go over there.
Yes, it will.
So.
That's a very good idea.
If you do decide to do it indirectly, tie the two jobs together, it's going to save yourself money.
Right. And that, and we all want to move that dumpster, you know, as best we can.
We also need to buy some markers for the sections of the cemetery in the rows?
Yes, thank you.
Which is, it's probably going to be minimal. I don't look for them to call, you know, they should, just.
Two to $300 apiece?
Oh, no, 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 no. Just.
Like metal?
Yeah, something that can be mowed, picked up and mowed around.
Like a little pole?
Okay.
Yeah, like if there were reflectors that have.
Section A, section B.
Yes, right. Now, the section signs maybe should be a little taller?
Right.
But as far as the row signs, they could just be like the little reflector signs.
Right.
I'm saying 150 bucks max.
For all of them?
Yeah. I may be way off, but, I mean, nothing elaborate, just kind of markers, so.
Well, but, and where the expense comes in, is what is the longevity of them? Because I think if we're going to spend money, we might as well go big and get them that are going to last 50 years, if that's possible.
I'll look into those and bring something to.
Well, things can change within 50 years. So you don't want them to last, just get like disposable ones, like, you know, the signs that people put up in their yard?
Yeah.
Like, vote for whoever?
Yeah.
Just get something like that, and then it's easily moved. I mean, they last a while, so, and they're cheap.
I'll look at some options?
Yeah.
Before the next meeting?
There you go.
See what I can come up with.
All right. Sounds good. All right. So how do you all want to act on the road? Do you want to act on the road?
He needs it today.
He needs an answer, for sure.
I say we go and make the motion. I'll go make the motion to accept it.
Okay.
I hate spending money.
That taxi's pretty good, huh?
I wouldn't think of it as spending as much as we're investing.
Well, like, it could change. It could go up or it's dead.
That's a fact. Yes, that's a fact. Yeah, there's, there's, this is a, this is a 30-day bid, so you're right, it could go up.
On the basis that we will actively pursue a grant?
Yes.
I will second it.
Yes.
But I want it, I'm seconding it only.
And then that's, that is a have-to situation. Yeah. And because I don't want to bust open one of those CDs, you know, I'm thinking of his generation that's going to need that, that's going to need that money.
And there's a lot of things that we need to do that cost money, so.
Yeah. And that's, it's one of those things. All right. Do we have any more discussion on this, guys? We have a motion in the second.
Well, Joanne's here, and we'll get to that shortly, but, like I said, I really want to dig into some of the grants that we'll be able to apply for this.
So many, this bill.
As quick as possible.
Should we try to get the grant first, like we was talking about?
No, because it's reimbursement grants.
It's too long.
Yeah, it's reimbursement grants. We have to pay upfront, and then they give money, money back to us.
Okay.
And that's actually where you get money from, Scott.
Yeah, that, those days are like.
That's all pretty.
They want to, they want to see our investment.
They want to see. They want to see if you're going to do something.
Yeah. Yeah, we.
Okay.
We're going to wish upon a star. All right. I will move to Commissioner John. Do you have anything for the streets and sidewalks?
Do we need to vote on it?
Oh, yes, yes, all those in favor. Thank you. I thought I had to vote. Thank you very much.
Well, the streets are looking pretty good, and they're holding up really well. My only concern is this winter with the salt. Jim, do we have enough salt? Do you know?
Jim.
The salt, are we well-equipped for winter?
Oh, we are.
Are we all equipped for winter with salt and everything?
You, you ain't got much salt.
So we need more salt?
We had some last year.
Then we need to build up the salt to go.
We could probably handle two snowstorms and we're going to be out.
Where we store that at?
In the wrong spot.
Yeah.
What we have in bags is stored inside down there. Bags are a pain in my butt.
Yes, they are.
And they're dangerous, I hate them, but I don't think we've got a choice. We waited too long.
Jim, what, how big of a concrete pad do you think that is? That we need to build down there for a lean-to, or we can buy salt again at the auction in the spring?
If you built like a 12-by-16 shed, you would have enough. If you're just going to build a pad and cover it over, you need something half the size of this room?
Right.
Because it just runs.
Right.
If you've got a shed where it can pile it up, if you notice melt in there, careful neither one.
Right.
There's the real tall shed, well, there's salts like up here. It's not running ever.
Right. We need to have room to get that front loader in.
Yeah, all you got to do is have room to get the front loader in loaded.
It's not a smaller version of what the state has, it's like a tent type.
Yeah, those are nice.
Yeah.
Those are expensive.
Anything.
They're expensive.
Yeah, like hoop barns. But what you would save on pouring the concrete pad, to throw a tarp on it, would pay for putting building.
Right. So that's going forward to talk about your salt.
How much will you lose for evaporation in the summer on that?
Have you put it on the ground?
Yeah.
All of it.
I mean, what you've talked about, will that preserve all of it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's sitting on concrete, isn't it?
Well, since we've hit the auction.
A heat luster.
Right, because they're in the spring.
Well, we need to decide before the spring that we're going to do this and, and go to the auction and buy a box.
Yeah, so before, before spring, we need to be really ready to spend that money to build ourselves.
If you get a shed, Todd can go online on that reverse auction thing and buy that, which, I ain't kicking dead horse, but in August, I told you we're to buy salt, it's half the price, it was half the price in August it is now. So, we're going to bite the bullet this year. But if you go ahead and do with that, come next summer, Todd hits online, they automatically sell it to you.
Yeah. February is when it's going.
Well, we need to take care of that.
It's very easy. But I, I knew last February, there was no sense in doing it if we don't have a concrete pad and building. And I'm just going to guess at a number of $5,000 or $6,000 for the concrete in the building. I mean, I'm just.
But if we have the building, we don't need the concrete, correct?
Yeah, you need a foundation for the building.
Yeah.
The, the ground is what took all the salt away on us this time.
Right.
And at a very fast rate. In fact, I mean, I was kicking on Todd for doing it, and I, it went away a lot faster than I anticipated.
It didn't, I didn't think it would go that fast either. And, and also, last winter, what, did we use any of it?
Yeah, we.
Wasn't much.
Yeah, we probably loaded three loads out there.
All right. Yeah, that's not much. Not much dollars.
Two inches of snow.
All right. Very little. And we're thankful for that.
Yeah.
But we do need to still be prepared, so we probably should order us a couple more pallets, at least to get us through this winter, get us started. And, you know, you've got a muscle guy there, he'll be able to jump up there and help load those a little bit. It's a lot of fun.
At 2:00?
I'll be at work.
We'll get it loaded up.
It's amazing you work 24 hours a day, John.
I work third shift, in case of college.
It's good.
But to answer your question on the salt, the truck, the spreader, everything else, yeah.
Yeah, we're ready to run.
In the most fall.
Yeah. Well, we'll get it. All right. And then we'll go to Commissioner Green with the sanitation.
Yeah, I talked to the gentleman on the truck this morning, who's doing the work, and he said everything's running fine.
Good. Good to hear it. Good to hear it.
With the sanitation, I think we need to work on a contractor from key about getting two dri, well, not two drivers, but two people doing it.
Okay. But, uh, we do need to still be prepared, so we probably should, uh, order us a couple more pallets, at least to get us through this winter, get us started. And, uh, you know, you got a muscle guy there, he'll be able to jump up there and help, uh, load those a little bit. It's a lot of fun.
At two, at two AM?
I'll be at work.
We'll, we'll get it loaded up.
It's amazing you work twenty-four hours a day, John.
I work, I work third shift, taste of college.
It's good.
But, to answer your question of the salt, the truck, the spreader, everything else, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're ready to run.
In the most full.
Yeah, well, we'll get it. Alright, uh, and then we'll go to Commissioner Green with the sanitation.
Yeah, I talked to the gentleman on the truck this morning, who's doing the work, and he said everything's running fine.
Good, good to hear it, good to hear it.
With the sanitation, uh, I think we need to work on a contractor from key-
Okay.
About getting two dri- well, not two drivers, but two people doing it.
Okay.
Because, sometimes when I come through in the morning, when I get off work, it's just the one guy, and then there's a huge line of traffic because it's just one guy.
And with boys.
And, he, he's, he's running and everything, and I think we need to work on contracts and hey, we need two people out there, a two-person job, side of way, he gets things done.
That's something that we will, uh-
It did have two people on timer.
Yeah, and, and like Jennifer, uh, said, uh- They're, they have a hard time keeping help.
Yeah, I'd say so.
And, uh, that extra position is called a tipper. And, uh, those people will work a day or two and, and they quit.
That's right.
And, uh, but that is something that we can bring up with, with Rumpy, uh, as we get into the bidding contract.
Probably something you can call our safety group.
Or, yeah, and just say, hey, we need a guy.
Or lower rates.
Yeah, well, I'll-
I mean, it's gonna take forever for them to get the trash, yet it's only one guy, and lower the rates.
I'll make, I'll make a call, and see what they can do for us, uh, call Rumpy. Alright, uh, Jennifer, you wanna give us an update on the sewer?
Everything's going good, um, they've got almost everything in, uh, we're supposed to have another meeting today, but we're gonna have to cushion off till later. Uh, but everything's good. I don't have an exact timeline yet, but hopefully-
They're getting all the information and everything?
They've got all the data and all the, everything that they need now, and just putting it in the system, putting it in the customers and their balance and... From there, I'm so excited.
And, and on that, uh, we got our postage meter-
Yes.
Good.
And, uh, we are, we are highly anticipating that our December bills will go out with our new utility billing software.
And that'll add the, the extra-
That will include the, the, uh, the new charge for the, uh, water meter readings, um, and, uh... And the trash. That'll include both of those, uh, uh, small increases. Alright, uh, the next one, guys, uh, we had a gentleman, uh, speak to Jennifer, and, uh, Jennifer, please jump in anytime, about working on our video surveillance equipment here. Uh, we have decent video surveillance equipment, uh, but this gentleman is very skilled in it. He can kinda fix what we have and then add to what we have, uh, so that we have more, more coverage of this building. It's, it's not only good for when we're not here, but it's good for when people are here. Should the, should an injury come up or, uh, someone break in, it's nice to have that video footage to see who, what, and how, when. And, if you all are, uh, interested in doing this, we will have the gentleman at our next meeting to kinda outline what he's gonna do. But I wanted to see if you all were in favor of at least moving forward on it.
So, did he give us any money numbers?
Yes. Yeah, he, he said, uh, he could do all of it for a thousand, and that's doing our computers and the software, or... Keeping it storage like the others is okay, and then the spreader's camera, that's using the existing cameras and adding like three more cameras.
Well, having come and talked to us.
Yeah.
Good, hard to talk, though.
Yeah, very good. Alright, and the next one, uh, guys, uh... Have you met Joanne, John?
Nice to meet you.
You're gonna, we're gonna vote on Jo- Joanne. Uh, as you all know, Amy Eversol, uh, moved on to another law firm, and she practices now in, in Indiana. So we are in need of an attorney, and, uh, I was very fortunate to find Joanne, and she is a Bedford resident. She lives out on, uh, Mount Pleasant Road, and, uh, she is an assistant county attorney in Jefferson County. And, uh, I was just really impressed with her resume, and impressed with the conversation that we had, uh... And I, I would like to move forward with hiring her, uh, and to do that, we need to pass a resolution that, uh, I will read to you guys. Whereas it is the duty of the city commission to hire a city attorney for the purposes of rendering legal services on behalf of that legislative body, and whereas it is determined that an agreement for professional services for Joanne Pitch should be authorized to acquire her services as city attorney from November seventeenth, or November twenty-first through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Bedford that the mayor is authorized to enter into an agreement for professional services with Joanne Pitch to provide legal services as city attorney from November twenty-first to June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
I spoke with Joanne as well, we, I came up and met her, and we talked, and she's-
I talked to her outside.
She's willing to go through our, uh, ordinances and procedures and help us get those up to date, revised and up to date, and as well as helping with the enforcement ordinances, the nuisance ordinance, and going forward into, because we've got some properties we're getting no responses on, and it needs to be addressed, possibly legally, and... So I think she'd be a good fit, and being here, uh, Bedford residents has a vested interest.
Alright.
So, I'll make a motion to go with that.
I'll go.
Either one. Alright, and any discussion?
I'll say.
Alright, and all those in favor? Alright, thank you very much, folks, I will get that, uh, contract signed, and, uh, we will... As you see, Joanne's already at the job. Alright, the last thing on the agenda for today, guys, is our Thanksgiving feast, uh, which is this evening. Uh, Tammy has been in there cooking, Jennifer's been cooking, and, uh-
Harold's gonna help with the gravy later.
There you go.
I'm here.
Uh, so we, we hope to have good attendance, it starts at five-thirty, so we hope to have a good attendance.
I have one more thing before we close.
That's fine.
Could you, would you mind leaving us for a minute?
Oh, thank you, thank you very much. And Jim, you go too. Please, go with her.
Don't come back.
Shut up, Karen. Let's go play Green's ball.
Thank you, Tammy.
Okay, we had, uh, at our last meeting, we did the personnel policies and talked about vacations and vacations not rolling over and time off not rolling over. I felt kinda bad about Jennifer because this year she has not had a chance to take a week's vacation because we had, didn't have anybody to cover the office. And I feel bad that we give that to her, then it's, here it is at the end of the year, and she hadn't had a chance to take it. I was thinking this year if we would possibly either let her, pay her for that week, or if we could, but it's almost too late in the year, but... Perhaps just this year, pay her that week that she wasn't able to take, and then next year, try to make arrangements to get somebody in here for that week.
Sure.
That way she could take her time off. But actually, this year, I don't think there was, we didn't supply a way for her to take off unless we just wanted to shut the office, but I want-
Me spend time in here, and I really don't want it.
We don't want that to happen.
I really don't like it, whether you want it or not, I don't like it.
So, I mean, it's just this year, since we just changed that as vacation not rolling over, but I just feel bad that somebody had that coming to them, and it's just gonna go away, and we just made that decision, you know, last month.
It's just put in the policy that if they don't take the vacation, then we pay them for a week of vacation anyway. So, that way, if they wanna work, they still can, because not everybody wants to take a vacation.
Well, okay, I get that, I get what you're saying.
But then people won't take the vacation, so we'll pay them.
And my issue there is they burn out.
Yeah, everybody needs at least a week off.
That's the whole idea, is they need to, that's why I wanted to put in there that it ends December thirty-first, if you don't use it, you lose it. Because I really am all about getting people out.
Yeah.
Getting them more advanced for their service.
And then we, then we'll start in January, we'll have a whole year to find somebody that, you know, we could say-
That's right.
We'll pay you this week to come in and sit, and have them come in, sit with Jennifer, let her know what, the basics of what they would need to do to give her that chance.
Right, and, and be thinking about who that is.
Right.
Because this is gonna need to be somebody who can come in here and learn it, first of all, and then be flexible.
Right.
That, that's, that is the big thing.
And it would only be that one week, so we're, whatever her vacation is.
Since we had people in here, I don't know what, what's happened.
Hmm.
We had people in here one time, you know what happened?
Yes, we had Cindy and Rita, we had Joyce and Rita, uh, and it was great, so we just need to bring another person in.
And, for nothing more than just to cover that vacation, you know, where if she gets sick, and it's a day that we have to have somebody.
Right, that's right.
But I don't wanna go against that ordinance, but since we just passed that last month, I think it's only fair that, you know, right here at Christmas time, and been a whole year, that we just-
And what we'll do is, uh, we will have a special meeting to amend those personnel policies so that it's in the policy. And then we can, we can alter it after that, we can do another, uh, resolution again, uh, municipal order, the way we changed them. It's an easy fix, and I'm glad you remembered it, because I forgot.
So-
Because that reminded me of something else.
I'd like to make a motion that we just pay her that week of vacation for this year, and then we'll amend the policy or proceed.
Yes.
Also.
Ordinance.
Alright, alright, any discussion?
Joe?
Anything, alright, all those in favor? Alright, alright, all passed.
Thank you.
Alright, the next thing that I, and I'm glad you reminded me of that because it's Christmas, and, uh... Now that they're gone, uh, traditionally, we have given them gift cards, or something like that. And last year, we had a Christmas, uh, dinner with the commissioners and the city employees over at Butler. I don't remember if Harold made it, I don't believe he did, but it was with the commissioners' wives, your husband, of course, and John, if you wanted to bring a date, uh, and Joanne. But we all met at a dinner place. Uh, Milton meets, their city of Milton is having their Christmas dinner at Harry Stone Grill, or something like that, uh... How do you all feel about that? Do you wanna have a little Christmas get-together, we all go meet somewhere and have dinner?
Or all wanna do something?
Whatever you all wanna do. I don't care if we're long-worn, but-
Texas Roadhouse?
That's a long way to go.
It is, it is. It is, but General Bunker has a nice-
It's worth the drive.
It is, but General Bunker has a very nice buffet, uh, that's where we did last year, but then again, it is, uh... Up to you all, 'cause I don't care, either way. I'm happy.
Well, you should have a good attendance in here for, you know, Christmas stuff.
Mm-hmm.
People come, it's pretty close and everything, you know?
Well, and I, I don't wanna sound exclusive, but it kinda is, uh, this is for the city people, for the, the commissioners, for the attorney, for the, the workers, uh, because we do have Erica, we have Jim, Jennifer, and Jordan. Uh, this is, this is something for you all, and I really, uh, it really doesn't matter to me where you all wanna do it. So that part we can talk up later, but I think the decision to do or not to do is what we should discuss, should decide on. And we do have Light Up Bedford coming up, and there will be a crowd for that.
Well, I say we definitely do it.
Okay, gotta work.
Well, you'll have, how about, you decide on a date since you probably have more commitments than the rest of us.
I work third shift, so, as long as I'm able to be there, I'll whatever.
You're only working thirds, you don't work at-
I work Sunday through Sunday.
And sometimes, don't you?
Well, we're gonna have to have a special meeting, correct?
Yes, we are.
So let's-
So we decide where.
We'll be thinking about the date and where.
Then do we also give the employees a gift card as well?
Uh, if yous want to, I think so, I like that idea.
True.
We got two part-time, two full-time.
Make the part-time less than the full-time.
Yes, and we can all have that amount if that's special.
Are all of them coming to the dinners?
Yes, absolutely, that'll be the deal, they want a gift card. You know?
But we wanna take care of Jennifer and Jim since they're the full-time.
And, and, uh, yeah, I think that'd be something nice, and it's nice for us commissioners to get together and have us a nice dinner too.
Meet the spouses.
Yes, and our attorney to come with us. Alright, so we'll plan on those dates and places.
And that'll be a part of the special meeting when we do it.
Yep, yep. Alright, anything else, folks?
Thank you, I'm good.
I have the girls in the back from the Historical Society, what would you girls? What would you like to bring up for us?
I'm the Cemetery Preservation Committee for the Historical Society, my name's John Law. And, uh, I had a, a mayor called, I had a conversation about unmarked veterans' graves in the Bedford Cemetery. And, um, just to let you know, we've got three stones already ordered, they'll be here within the next five weeks. However, um, we're struggling to try and find out where exactly they're buried because of the older side of the cemetery. So, um, we were wondering if there was a place where we could do more of a memorial-
Yeah.
Instead of on the grave itself, if we can't find the graves.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, if there could be a place designated in the cemetery for, just for these veterans. There will be more, I promise you, as we-
On the older side, is that where you want to?
Right, um, as we go through the records and, um, try to find where they're buried. Um, a lot of them are buried far to the east, twenty. So, um, if, if, I've been through the books looking for them, and I have not been able to find them yet.
Right.
So, um, I think it's gonna be one of those things where we'll leave it up to you what you would like to do. The stones that the VA will send us don't cost anything, they are free. They, but weigh two hundred and forty pounds apiece, they are the upright granite stones. Um, if they are unioned, they will have a shield on them and raised lettering. Otherwise, it's pretty much the black clap lettering on them. Uh, they require sixteen inches of depth to be placed with, um, actually eighteen inches, because she got below two inches with gravel and drainage. And, um, we have, our people know how to do this, we've been doing it on Creek the past few months, and, uh, we're setting up on Creek Cemetery. And we have a member of our committee, his name is Richard Bedwell. He designed the CSA Harvest Town Cemetery in two thousand and one. And, uh, he has very good expertise, uh, what we do. He also happens to be my cousin, and he lives in Fresno, but he's a member of our society, and he has been helping us with Corn Creek. He is also our lead to the VA, worked for the VA for years.
Okay.
So he comes with great expertise, but we'll lay that out to you, and see if you wanna chew on that for a while.
Well, those stones are gonna be in pretty soon.
The stones will be here probably by Christmas.
Yeah, and, and, you know, what we-
And they will be delivered here, so you need a safe place for them, and they bring them in, these big huge, uh, they bring them in crates. And, uh, they will call you before they deliver them, which is nice of them.
Yes.
And, um, if you can just store them, decide where you want them, let us know, and we'll go out and deliver them.
And I think what we'll do is when they call, we'll have them meet us at the cemetery.
Maybe Dave could give us an idea where there would be a night, 'cause he takes care of mowing and the maintenance, so maybe he has an idea where it'd be.
And I'm thinking near the gazebo.
Oh, they wanted an old section.
I, I don't think it matters, does it?
You know, the older side, I don't know if you've driven through there lately, but it looks like somebody that you could baseball out to three quarters of the grave or somewhere there recently. I don't know if that was men or what it was.
Yeah, well, we did have some of that.
The monuments have been falling, and the ground is really, really unstable.
Yeah.
You know, I've got a couple of relatives buried over there, and we're gonna have to go and set their monuments too. Uh, but a lot of them are down, and it's because ground, wind, water, things shift.
Nature, yeah.
Nature does its thing, and, uh, if you wanted it on the other side of the cemetery, we could, we, you know, we could make a veterans' memorial garden out of that area, make it pretty.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think the Historical Society would want to do that, or they don't.
Well, and what I'm thinking about is that, back to that, uh, that part of the cemetery near the gazebo where we have a lot of spring activity under the ground. And if we know these are just gonna be memorials, there's not gonna be any burials there, uh, I think that would make it look nice. And then we're not worried about, uh, burying someone there, down, down the road.
And we should probably move the flagpole back to-
Absolutely.
To that area.
I think it solved a lot of problems because when I've been, I don't know if Jennifer's still chief tallying, but I've been here about months, we've been going through the books, looking for unmarked veterans' graves, and unmarked graves in general. And then I've been going on Find a Grave, and I've been going down all the lists of all the unmarked graves. a Grave, and I've been going down all the lists of all the unmarked graves that are older, okay, but I'm keeping a log on that, we're finding way too many, way too many that I might test probably are in the area. And, you know, if that's the case, then if there is a complication and somebody can't find a member of your family or something like that, and they would like to have some form of memorial for it, we would have a space designated for that.
Right. Yeah, so there's something for us to be, to have ready.
Or you could actually, or if you wanted to, you could actually put in a cremation garden.
Yeah, that is coming. It's like a mausoleum. Yeah, that's in the works. But that's a ways off too.
There's something that you want between now and when they get there.
Absolutely, well, that'll be a discussion that is necessary, you know, so we can get this done. And we thank you for what you are doing.
Oh, thank you for letting us do it, we're happy to all.
Love what you do, right?
Well, yes, we've got 12 people out there that love doing this.
Right, well, we're very grateful.
They do want to do, we are talking about putting in a, I don't know, because I don't think they do it anymore, is a flag program for the veterans' memorial.
Yes. And that will be very nice come spring, very nice. All right, does anyone have anyone else, anything else?
What day do we want to have the special meeting, the last one?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I'll, yeah, I'll get with you, Tammy, and we'll look at calendars and stuff, and you and Harold, John, and Joanne, we'll all work a date out.
For the special meetings, if it tends it's going to be around when, when would you say?
Uh, what do you mean?
For the special meeting, like?
Yeah, it'd probably be a six o'clock meeting.
December?
Yes.
First week of December, maybe?
First or second week of December.
Well, six o'clock meetings, as possible, when I'm having finals.
Okay, so you need like a Tuesday.
It's gonna have to be on Tuesday.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And what else is gonna be on that special meeting?
About the.
The ordinance?
Yeah, the.
Personnel.
Yeah, personnel policies, changing the municipal.
We could, I could maybe give an update on, you know, start looking at the block grant thing.
Okay.
And we could that out now.
Okay, that'll work. Fabulous.
Okay.
All right. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
You do, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, John.
He's got to get to making great decisions.
Yeah, that's right. And we have a second?
I'll second.
And all those in favor? Thank you very much, thank you very much for coming.
Very, very fruitful.